And.
Recording in progress.
Welcome, everybody, to our February fifteenth City Council meeting. Before I call it to order, as usual, we're going to ask our dedicated city clerk to explain to people our procedures and how you can participate in this online Zoom meeting. So Clementine, it's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are two ways to virtually participate in this evening's meeting. You may join us using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device, and you can also call into the Zoom meeting. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer, smartphone, or telephone, use the link or telephone number on the agenda at iSearchMonterey.org. To call in by telephone, dial toll-free eight three three five six eight 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 six four, and enter meeting ID one six zero seven seven two nine three 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 pound. And if prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you dialed in by phone, raise your hand by dialing star nine and then unmute yourself when called upon by dialing star six. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. I will call on each public speaker in the order of their hands raised. Please stay within the time limit established for today's meeting. A countdown timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, that timer is accurate with no delay. Today's meeting is also streamed live on the city's YouTube account at youtube.com/cityofmonterey with about 10 seconds delay and on Comcast Channel 25 about 90 seconds delay. As always, we look forward to receiving your public comments.
Oh, thank you. Nicely done. So we'll call the meeting officially to order, and I invite you to please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God. Indivisible.
With liberty.
Liberty, and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Clementine, one more business of order, please. Would you introduce your, the city's caring city council?
Yes, gladly. Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Williamson.
Here.
And Mayor Roberson.
And I'm here as well. And so we're just going to go ahead and get right started on our first item of business, which is a public hearing. This is our fifth public hearing for transition sitting from at-large elections to by-district elections for moderate council members. This is second reading of an ordinance that first reading was passed at the last meeting. And if you're, as Yogi Berra said, having deja vu all over again, we have really had a lot of excellent conversations and input. Our staff has done incredible work to get this done in order to meet the timeline as established by law, to meet the shot clock, as we say. So I'm not going to say any more than thank you very much to our absolutely incredible staff to get us this far. So what we'll have is a brief overview, questions, go to the public, and then the council can make a final decision. So with that, we'll go to our dependable city manager, Hans Busler.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I will ask Nat to do us the honor and present to us a very brief presentation. As the mayor stated, this is the second reading of the ordinance to establish and implement by-district elections. And the, the second reading is also day ninety-one of within the timeframe of the California Voting Rights Act. Ninety days is the standard. We asked for one day extension with LULAC and got the additional day. So we are today on day ninety-one within the ninety days usually time limit. So I'm giving that over now to handing it over to Nat for a very brief presentation as has stated.
Thank you, Hans, and it will be very brief. Today is indeed the last day to remain within the safe harbor provision to adopt the new council member district maps as well as sequencing. And as we've shared with you before, no changes from introduction with ordinance can be made to meet that legal deadline and hold this with second reading. So I will share my screen very briefly. We have a, it should be a very quick, allow Zoom to share your screen. So hang on just one moment. And having, having a little bit of a technical difficulty here, so please bear with me. This is a new computer, so I'm unable to share my screen, unfortunately. So give me just one minute to unlock my computer and allow Zoom to share the screen. And let's, let's try it one more time here. I apologize for this. It should be, I'm at home today, so there we go. Okay, hope you all see this.
Yes.
And really only a few slides. Again, tonight's recommendation is to hold the fifth and final public hearing, second reading of the ordinance. This would adopt the Dolphin map. And then the sequencing that has been discussed is to have districts one and two be sequenced in 2022, and then the, I'm sorry, three and four in 2024. This is what the map looks like. You can see the boundaries clearly listed for districts one, two, three, and four. And this is the sequencing, how that would work, districts one and two in 2022, three and four in 2024. And all of the information is published not only on our website at monterey.org in the packet that you see before you, but also on our website, havieresmonterey.org/districting. We have all the public comments, the dozens of maps submitted, the timeline, all the background is available online. And that's, that's it. That's the brief presentation for you. Felt like we didn't need to rehash all the details on the background, but if you do have questions, we're always here, happy to answer them for you.
Okay, thank you for the brief overview. As I said earlier, we've, I don't know even know how many hours we've spent on this. So if anyone tuning in for the first time, we're not shortchanging this subject. This is our fifth hearing on it. Council questions before we go to the public? I don't see any. And then let's go ahead to find out if there's anyone who'd like to address the council in this item tonight. And we're talking about the final adoption of the map and the sequencing of district elections.
As a reminder, if you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of the screen or dial star six to raise your hand. I'm sorry, star nine to raise your hand if you're on the telephone. Okay, we have one hand raised. Please go ahead, Esther Mountain.
Good evening, everybody. I wanted to close this whole epic episode that we've dealt with for the last couple of weeks in stating very clearly, because some have tried to change the narrative, that this conversation was never meant to be homeowners versus renters when renters were introduced into the districting. It was always meant to be about, about renters needing to be heard by the majority of the elected officials and passing policies to keep them here so that they don't have to struggle for the human right of affordable housing that they end up leaving or becoming homeless. So absolutely no animosity whatsoever to homeowners. This is, you know, every renter's dream is to become a homeowner, and that dream is obviously faded very, very quickly, especially in this past year. And now with inflation the way it is. I just want to remind everybody that, you know, you ever hear complain about homelessness, whether it's a business or a resident or anybody whatsoever, that the number one tool you have, and it's at your disposal, is to create policy to make rents affordable here and now. And this council has not done that. They have ta, you guys have taken months to take care of the bare minimum housing, renter issue with this rental registry that in the time that, that you guys have been discussing this, Salinas has already come and gone and done it. And in this amount of effort that you guys have had staff do, you should have already been looking at more things besides just the beginning of a rental registry conversation. So again, anytime you guys are going to address or fund or talk about homelessness, if you don't do your part to make sure that we don't keep adding to those homeless numbers, we are never going to catch up. And talking about new development, while we can't build and we're going to sit around and wait another decade for all of that to happen, if you continue not to address and kick the can down the road with creating rental, renter policies, this is never going to become a sustainable way of keeping residents here and workers, which the pandemic proved to you. So again, this is not about renters versus homeowners when it comes to the districting. It's about you guys, the council, the policymakers, listening to the residents and doing more than just talk about doing things. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do have three more hands raised. The next is a telephone caller with the last three digits, two zero four. Please go ahead.
Yes. Good evening, Tom Rowley from Fisherman's Flats. I apologize, I was not able to participate in the meeting two weeks ago in which you passed the Dolphin as the preferred election districts. We didn't agree with that, but that's the breaks of the game. You did make the major decision and like to compliment the staff and the city council for having a very, very detailed debate derive at your decision. Great minds, of course, can differ. I'm sorry to say that our neighborhood is stuck in with Montavista and neighborhoods that are very far away and breaks the pattern of compact and contiguous. But anyway, we will go with the flow. We will have an election in our area this fall, which we're looking forward to. You can expect that Fisherman's Flats Neighborhood Association will have a candidate's forum. We're looking forward to it. And I'd like to wish all the existing council the best of luck on whatever they decide to do for their, their plans for the city council. And I'm sure we will have additional candidates that will be present that we may or may not expect at this time. So again, thank you very much for moving forward in a very expeditious way. This is a process that Rick Hoyer, Rich Rucel, and myself started in March of six, March of twenty, and we got delayed due to the pandemic. I think that you made it in time for the fall elections, and you ought to be complicated. The role of Nat and, and the city manager in coordinating and getting this through to the end has been exemplary. So thank you very much, all of you.
Thanks for your kind words, Tom.
Next, let's hear from Laura Pratt. Go ahead, Laura.
Hi, I'm actually wanting to call in for the public comment, but while I'm on this one, I'll make a comment on this as well. I'm part of a group that is all about renters and what we need from the city council since we are the largest, I believe, the largest makeup of citizens in the city. We also did not agree with the map that you all chose, that you seem to have almost pre-chosen in a lot of ways. But anyway, I will reserve the rest of my remarks for the public comment for item not on the agenda.
Hey, and next, let's hear from a phone caller with the last three digits, seven zero five. Seven zero five. Going once, phone call with the last three digits, seven zero five. If you could unmute, please, star nine. We'd like to hear what you have to say. Okay, well, and their hand went down. Maybe that's, maybe that person was calling for a general public. Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Sorry, I would, I was waiting for the public comment.
Oh, okay, well, we'll call on you again then if you raise your hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it, Clementine?
I'm sorry, I thought you could hear me. I just said that concludes the districting public comments. We have no more hands raised.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate the folks who spoke tonight who've been with us during this long stretch. All right, let's bring it back for the city council. I honestly don't have anything to add. I think this has been well discussed, as Tom said, I think it was Tom, well debated. I will, and although we didn't get unanimity, I certainly respect everybody's viewpoint on this. We're not going to let perfect get in the way of good. So council, what is your pleasure? Alan, would you, councilmember Alan, want to start us?
Yeah, I don't have anything really new to say. I still feel the same as I do last time. I do respect the council majority, and I suspect we should probably just move forward.
Thank you, councilmember.
I'll move to approve.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the second reading of the ordinance discussion. I want to give you plenty of chance to discuss this, this is your chance. Anyone?
Yeah, if I could just point out, I think we had one caller, Tom Rowley, pointed the staff out, and particularly Nat's work project has really been all about the districting since this process started. And I just want to call out and say, I think the word exemplary is probably not enough. This has been a major initiative by many, many members of our staff and of course, city attorney and city manager and Nat especially. So just wanted to say thank you for the fine work and to use the word again, it's been not only exemplary, but I think we've met every timeline and we've, we've stayed ahead of this and I think handled this process as much as we could. And as it's been mentioned, everyone has a varying opinion for their, their various reasons. And ultimately, we have to make a decision and move forward and get to the business of seeing how these districts line up. So just want to say thank you to the community that's stayed along for a very active and vibrant process and gave us some great ideas through the process. But thank you for the staff and thank you for the community that responded and opened up and gave us their time so we could hear their opinions.
Thank you, councilmember Ed. Anyone else before I call for roll call? Okay, saying no more comments, I don't believe. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Williamson.
No.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa.
No.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson.
Yes. And all the people said amen. So public comments, I know we had some folks who were waiting. Public comments allows the public to speak for a maximum of three minutes on any subject and please, within the jurisdiction of the Monterey City Council, which is not on the agenda. And so we will ask you in a moment to join us. And also, you can always contact the city of Monterey at suggest@monterey.org. That's really helpful because that allows the staff to follow up and have a contact. And of course, if you have a request this evening, I encourage you to make sure that the staff has your contact, and we will guarantee that you'll hear back from them. So with that, back to Clementine for any public comment not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the city of Monterey.
Yes, the firsthand I saw raised was from Gabriella Schlesinger James, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. Please go ahead.
Can, am I unmute, am I ready?
We can hear you.
Oh, great, hi, everybody. It's good to see your faces. We have a really important community here in Monterey, really diverse, as you guys all know. And I think it's really important, I mean, as, as decisions have been made thus far, to remember what the important issues and what the point of having council members and having folks to represent constituents is, and that's to, for representation in and of itself. This being so, there's a lot of folks who work in downtown, who also live downtown, who are worried about how we can make sure that our rent is stabilized and that we won't have to wake up, you know, and have our rent raised a thousand dollars overnight, which is something that I think is a very real concern for all of us. So as much as the districting was, was disappointing, I really do have faith and hope that it does give us an opportunity to give representation and voice and perspective to folks who need it and to the folks who really are the backbone of the Monterey community, to the folks who take care of the tourists who come in that keep our economy going. I take off my hat to all the work that, that you guys have all done, but I think now's the time for us to come together and make sure that we get the wheels turning and make sure that the promises that are made are upheld. So that's all I really have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Gabriella.
Next, we've got Laura Pratt. Go ahead, Laura.
Hi again, hi again. So just to elaborate on that, I am part of a, a member of a group that is organizing community members in regards to housing-related issues, more specifically renter-related issues. Our goal is to hold you all accountable and demand that there is the attention on these issues that are important to the renter community, which, as you know, is sixty-four percent of the residents here. So we are very much looking forward to you very soon, hopefully putting this on the agenda as you promised to do back in September. You said you would be putting it on the agenda in December, and this is now mid-February, and it still has not been addressed. So we're holding you accountable. We want you to take care of this. We want our voices to be heard, and we want our issues to be worked on. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Laura.
Next, Jean Rush.
Hi, thank you, Clementine. I'm joining in the chorus of hoping that now that the redistricting is done with, we can focus on the issue of renters. If there's one thing that did come out productively of redistricting, and perhaps the only thing, it's the focus on the sixty-four percent that rent. And my, my concern is so broad. I mean, I'm an oldster now, and I can remember when inflation was eighteen percent and my first mortgage was sixteen percent and credit cards were twenty-one percent. And credit cards never came down. They're still extremely high. And credit cards never came down. They're still extremely high. Then we went through variable mortgages and, and people were abused in that area, losing their homes. And then the gouging started with student loans. And leases are the next thing in that line. They're, they're an easy pocket of money for these wealthy LLCs that have such a control of the market. Blackstone and Gray Star and all the rest of them. That are forcing this inflationary cycle to hit our rental properties. And, and we do need to be very concerned. This is going to alter the business environment, the ability of our important businesses like hospitality to get a stable workforce. Our workforce is not going to be secure. They're not going to be at ease. They're, they're going to be constantly looking over their shoulders. About all this instability and, and I, I really join with the chorus, hoping that. Collaboratively, we can all work on how to, how to protect such an important part of our community. It used to be that, you know, renting was a stepping stone toward ownership. And with the inability of that, the huge wealth disparities. We have to look at protections for renters as renters, as a permanent community of great importance to our city. So thank you for your attention to that.
Thank you Jean.
Next, we have a phone caller with the last three digits, seven zero five. Please ask, okay, go ahead, please.
Yes, good evening, city council members and Mayor Robertson and the public. I'd like to talk about the corruption that is happening with corporate America. I think we're all aware of it, but it stung me personally this last week. I lost twelve hundred dollars through eBay gift cards. And it was sold to me through Rite Aid and they refused to refund the money. And I said, you know, why are you selling these cards knowing that they are, they can be fraudulent and no accountability? And they make money on these cards themselves. So all the corporations across America, all these gift cards now. Are absolutely capable of fraud and you don't get your money back. And it's the first time where corporate America is policing the American people and saying, there's nothing you can do about it. And I went to the police department about this and they just shook their head and said, yeah, the gift card. It is the biggest body of scamable material. And I, I think that our city, our city fathers need to go to our local pharmacies. And say, why are you selling these cards? If you can't stand behind these cards and if you can't tell the corporations that are selling these cards, then you shouldn't sell them. Period, the end. So that kind of corruption is happening now all over and it's okay. And it's, it, it just filters in and it rots the integrity, the spine of integrity of our nation. And we can't put up with it. So I, I say to Rite Aid, I say to all these corporations that don't care. They're super rich and they don't care about the little people. It's going to come back to them and bite them. Because these people hopefully will not buy gift cards anymore. So that's just my, what I wanted to warn people about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then I have, I have one other issue because I still have some time, not a lot. Conservation is not being talked about. We have to get out of our cars. One gallon of gas emits nineteen point six pounds of CO2. So the reality is, we have to stop thinking about mining the oceans for our batteries. And mining the land for our batteries, which is incredibly toxic, going to be requiring so much energy. We have to start talking about mass transit, bullet trains, going from here to San Francisco in two hours. We can do that. And that's got to be the conversation. Nature is not going to negotiate with us. Thank you so much.
Thank you Lorna. And next, we have Brandon Naylor.
Mic check.
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. So I'm a homeowner in Monterey and I wanted to speak to the renter issue. I think this is an, an issue that not just concerns renters, but everyone who lives on the peninsula. I think rents have been growing at an unsustainable pace and with the renters being the backbone of the service industries that drive our economy. What's this community going to look like five, 10 years from now if we don't do something now to keep rents sustainable? Be that rent controls or rental registries or whatever other tools are available. But the point I want to make is, you know, e- even from a homeowner's perspective, something needs to be done to keep this community vibrant for all of us who live here. Thank you, I yield my time.
All right, thank you. Morgan Ivans Duran. Please go ahead.
Hi, thank you. My name is Morgan Ivans Duran and I am a six-year resident of the city of Monterey. And I'm also a member of the same group that you've heard from tonight, that's organizing community members on housing issues, particularly renter issues in the city. I wanted to start by echoing the comments that you've already heard during open public comment tonight. And to add that I participated in this study session that council held back in September. And I really left that meeting feeling energized and looking forward to the next steps. From that meeting and the council and city staff really taking some concrete actions to address renter issues in the city that I've chosen to call home. And yet, it is mid February, as has been stated, it's been five months since that meeting. And as far as I'm aware, staff has yet to report back to council and the public on what those next steps might look like. This is really troubling as a resident and a voter in the city of Monterey. And it seems to reflect a lack of prioritization of this issue, both by city staff and by the council at large. I really urge the council and staff to work to place this on a future meeting agenda. And I'd appreciate hearing from the city manager or the council. An explanation to all of us who called in tonight to really highlight that this is an urgent issue and that we are paying attention and we are listening for action. To talk about why this item hasn't come back to the council yet and when we might expect to really hear from staff and move this issue forward. Thank you. And with that, I yield my time.
Thank you. And we have Jennifer Heidu. Heidu?
Mic check.
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. I'd also like to echo some of the comments that have been made tonight, particularly by Morgan, who just spoke. And also by Jean and a few others. I'm also a renter. I live in Monterey, have been for quite some time. I've been a peninsula resident for twenty-five years and I've had a business in Pacific Grove for eighteen of those years. I've been a renter the entire time. I've seen my rent. More than double in the time that I've lived here. And you know, when your total income, when, when you have to pay more than half of your total income to rent, there's not a whole lot left over. And it doesn't leave you a cushion for emergencies. And if COVID has taught us nothing, it has taught us that there are more people living closer to the edge than we've realized. And in a community as beautiful and vibrant as Monterey, it's sad that so many people leave here. Because they just simply can't afford to live here and make a living. The jobs that we have on the peninsula don't match up with what rent is. It's just a fact. People are paying way more than half of their income to rent. And it makes it impossible to start families or to keep families here. I know so many people that work two jobs, three jobs in multiple different service industries just to make the rent. And that's not the kind of community we want to cultivate here. It doesn't make sense for us to unfortunately be that mirror for the larger country. Where we have a huge wealth discrepancy and we have a lot of people working at minimum wage and low wages. And then paying really high rents. So part of your job as council is to show leadership on this issue. And it is disappointing that there has been talk and meetings and round tables and that's all great, but do something. Get to the next step. Where are these staff recommendations? Why hasn't it come, come back on the agenda? It's time. It's time now. People need help now. And I know, like I said, I know multiple professional colleagues, people with masters and PhDs that are leaving the area. Because they just simply are exhausted from working so hard just to make rent. We, we can do better as a community. And if we want to have a sustainable community where people aren't. Clogging up the highways and the streets and causing a lot more traffic congestion because they're commuting in from Salinas. And farther afield to work in our service industries, then we've got to create affordable rental housing on the Monterey Peninsula. So let's get on it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And Esther Malkin? Go ahead.
Hello again. So obviously you can tell that more and more people, homeowners and renters are paying attention. And calling on you guys as our elected officials to represent the whole constituency, especially the majority of the residents in this city. Which you have not. You know, you all say that you are concerned or care about renters. But you haven't done anything to show us that. And I don't mean to be combative, but it's just fact. It, you know, anything that comes up with renters gets kicked, they kick down the road. And you, you just put it off and the rents keep going up. So I want to remind you that we do have elections coming up and that renters are voters. And while the demographers made it sound like renters have not turned out to vote in the past. I can promise you that you're going to see more renter turnout than ever in the coming elections. Because we are making it a point to call out elected officials who have not done anything, that are looking to keep their control in these council seats. But yet they're not speaking to the majority of the residents in this city and taking care of their needs. As opposed to the business need, community needs and homeowners property, you know, taxes, complaints. And all these other things that renters are just trying to get by on hopefully just two jobs. Some of them have to have more than that, which actually makes it impossible for renters to take the time to run for a city council position. To represent their district now, which again, you know, the way these districts have, have been sequenced is problematic. In and of itself, because you know, the renter, the heavy renter population is not going to have a chance to vote until 2024. Because you bought the, the story that the demographers gave you. And because you went ahead with your constituents, the three of you that voted for the dolphin map. So we need to get representation on these councils and we have to find a better way to make that happen. Renters are working multiple jobs. They have families. They don't have, they're not retired, like, like many of you sitting there now are. So they don't have the time or the finances to run for council. But they do have the time to turn out to vote. And we will be making it a point to make them understand the power that they have in their vote. And if you guys want to stay on those city council seats, you're going to have to do something more than just talk about rent issues. You're going to have to create policies. Thank you.
All right. And Mr. Mayor, there are no further hands raised at this time. You're muted.
As I said, we want to thank everyone for taking the time to share their comments with us. We appreciate it. All right, the next thing is we have our consent items. Did we have anyone from the public who wanted to pull any of those that we know of? And then secondly, any council members have a question or want to pull anything from the consent?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
All right, I'll second it. Roll call, please.
Council member Albert.
Yes.
Council member Hoffa.
Yes.
Council member Smith.
Yes.
Council member Williamson.
Yes.
And Mayor Robertson.
And yes, that's passes five oh. All right, we have a couple of public appearance items. We have a second reading. Authorizing an amendment to the contract between the city of Monterey and the Board of Administration of Calpers. And I, again, will turn it over to. Our very capable Hans Uslar. And I don't know if you had it, just a brief reminder of what this was all about, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I thought we were using the letter D tonight, but I hand it over to our HR director, Alison Hall.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is the adoption, the second and final reading of an ordinance. That would amend our contract between the city of Monterey and the Board of Administration for Calpers. And this just provides some clarity to our Calpers contract to show the part-time seasonal employees and their job titles. That are exempt from Calpers membership. It used to just list that hourly employees were exempt from membership. And now it lists the classification titles for more clarity for Calpers.
All right, thank you. As I remember that from last time. Council questions? Let's go to the public, please. Any public comment?
No hands are raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right, back to the council and I'll, I'll move approval.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
All right, council member Hoffa.
Yes.
Council member Williamson.
Yes.
Council member Albert.
Yes.
Council member Smith.
Yes.
And Mayor Robertson.
Yes, that passes five zero. All right, next is once again, back to our city manager for an update on COVID-19 response efforts. It's, I don't know about you all, but I'm, I'm sitting here going, what, who, where? It certainly is a moving target. And as of midnight tonight, if you're vaccinated, you don't need to wear a mask indoors. Who's going to enforce something like that is beyond me, but ultimately, we have to be sure we're all careful. And if we feel we need to wear masks, so be it. And if we feel we need to, to care of ourselves and what kind of venues that we go in. Ultimately, we're going to have to make that decision. So Hans, go ahead and tell us what's new on your plate with respect to this.
Well, Mr. Mayor, you essentially gave my presentation. Tonight, I keep it very short.
Okay.
We, we can clearly see that the Omicron variant numbers are dropping in the county. We also see this within our workforce where we had quite a number of cases, but thankfully, thanks to the vaccination status of our employees. Everyone got through it relatively fast and swiftly. We, we, we are implementing tomorrow the guidelines as required by the California Department of Public Health. And also as underlined and underwritten by our county's public health of Dr. Moreno. We will have in the sports center, basically, again, no mask requirements, except for those who are not vaccinated. We will use self-advisation for that. We will continue to have masks required in our programs, recreation programs for the youngest among us. In our preschool classes up at Hilltop Park, as well as at the Alastero Center. Our, our workforce was also appropriately informed. We also have made it absolutely clear to everyone working in the city that if they feel comfortable. Without the mask, that is okay if everyone is vaccinated around. And like I stated before, our employees working in the offices are vaccinated. But if they feel they, they want to use extra caution, we, we continue to supply K-95 masks and encourage employees. If they feel that, that they need to wear a mask, that they will continue to wear a mask. We will bring back the, the issue about hybrid meetings. It will come back to you now. Because we, we have a different stage reached again. And so we will discuss that in, in March at our next meeting. How the council wants to conduct, conduct future meetings. We will continue to advocate, of course, that. that there is a hybrid version also for the public to participate and call in and participate. That is all what I tell you. We have a conference coming to Monterey on Thursday and we expect around 1,000 judges of California coming vaccinated and will be in the conference center. So it appears that we are moving back into some more type of normalcy. Last but not least, what I told staff is politicians don't decide when the mask can be taken off. It's ultimately the pandemic or the prevailing variant. So we need to keep our guards up like all of you are doing that. So that's all kept it brief and short tonight.
Thank you, Hans. Any public comment about that excellent summary? Clementine, anyone?
There is nobody with their hand raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. All right. Council comments. And I know, again, I always want to thank you all, council members for serving on lots of outside boards and commissions. And I don't have any updates worth respect to the Water Management District, but I did, Hans and Nat hosted a meeting of some of the Neighborhood Association presidents. We had a lot, a really good conversation. And one of the takeaways from that meeting was the new normal. How do neighbors and members of associations, not necessarily just neighborhood associations, but any of us, how do we stay in touch? How do we keep our membership active? How do we make sure that everyone's engaged? So each neighborhood president shared the ways that they have, they do that. It's anything from just seeing each other in the neighborhood to email blasts, next door, Zoom meetings and actually some in-person meetings, obviously following the various protocols. So lots just in general, there was a satisfaction with our city, I would say, if that's a fair thing to say, I believe. And how we go forward, how do we reconnect with this pandemic? Because I think we're going to be spending the next two to three years defining the new normal going forward. How do we do business if we end up being in an endemic instead of a pandemic? So that's more or less the summary. And so I will turn it over to any other council members who'd like to share. Council member Dan, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have two comments. One is there was a very brief article. We're not even an article. It's at the Monterey County Weekly, the buzz portion of the edition. And it referenced to 3% of the Monterey Salinas Transit's $59 million revenue came from our Fairbox collection, which in normal times would appear pretty low. But as the chair, I just wanted to mention to the council and the public that's listening that if you look at the pre-COVID numbers of passenger fares, MST actually receives about 25, 20 to 25% from Fairbox dollars. The reason for the low Fairbox percentages is for the past two years, we've used COVID relief funds, just like about every other public agency, to make up the difference. Our COVID relief funds are going to run out at the end of this year. So hopefully, like TOT, we'll be back to more normal ridership along with normal revenue. So that should pop back up to 20 to 25%, depending on the number of riders. So I just wanted to bring that up because I did see it in the Coast Weekly, in the Monterey County Weekly. And then the second thing is I participated in a Monterey Vista Neighborhood Association Beautification Project. If you drive along Solidad next to Mona Vista Shopping Center in front of the MVNA sign, the area has been cleaned up and removed the weeds and installed wood chips and it looks really nice in front of that sign. So I'd like to take this time to thank Kip Hudson for spearheading the project, Pat Venza and Hans Janisch for getting their hands dirty and they definitely got their hands dirty along with all of us. And of course, city staff are supplying the support and the tools. It really looks nice. But a special shout out to the six Defense Language Institute students. And you know, I didn't get their last names. I was just calling them by their first name. So I'm just going to let them know. And that's Ava, Andrew, Chris, Kristen, Savannah, and their leader, Tim, for the three hours of hard work in making that corner look a lot better. What a team. We had a lot of fun for three hours. And so once again, I really appreciate the DLI helping us out there. So that's my two comments, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. That's really nice, nice to hear. Council member Tyler, anything from your agencies or anything this evening?
Yeah. Well, so first I wanted to provide just an additional thought in regards to the last agenda item for the change to the mask mandate requirement. I think it's just important that we also are mindful of organizations or businesses that want to continue their mask requirement in their businesses so that when people enter those spaces, that they're respectful of what the business owners might be asking. So I just kind of wanted to throw that out since it's not like a cross-the-board thing, but for at the state level, I think that's kind of the direction that we're seeing. I also wanted to provide an update to the community in regards to an event that we'll be hosting. It's called Monterey as a Community. It's going to be co-hosted with myself, council member Alan Hoffa, and prior council members Libby Downey and Nancy Selfridge. And so the goal is to explore issues that impact our community and identify possible solutions, including things like housing availability, unhoused community members, government and community collaboration, and really just whatever is important to community members that want to come out and share things that are important to them in the city of Monterey. We're excited for the interactive session. So we're asking you to please bring your voices. If you can't attend, I just ask that you send emails to me at Tyler, that's T Y L L E R at monterey.org. And this will take place on February 28th and March 5th. There'll be two sessions and we're hoping folks can attend both. They'll be from 3:00 to 4:30 at the lawn in front of Monterey City Hall. So again, 3:00 to 4:30 on February 28th and March 5th. And so since it's going to be on the lawn there, we just ask folks to bring their chairs and blankets so they can be comfortable as they join in on the event. So super excited for that. And I really look forward to hearing from the community. And I'm not sure if Alan wants to jump in and say anything afterwards, but I'm going to give one more update and then I'll yield my time. So I represent the city on Monterey One Water and our big decision, which I think I announced at our last council session, was in regards to a joint outfall project that CalM had proposed to Monterey One Water. So they have to line one of their requirements in order to move forward with the Coastal Mission, Coastal Commission regarding their D-Saw project is to line the outfall. And we also have a project in our CIP plan to readjust the structure that holds the outfall that goes out to the ocean. And so CalM came to us trying to do a joint project, but there's been some issue with something that we've already agreed upon, which is the water purchase agreement for the expansion project. And so the board voted unanimously to hold off on any agreement with CalM on this joint project that they've brought forward to us until we move forward with the expansion project. So the big thing is we don't want to overload our staff with too much work and they have a lot on their plate with trying to deal with the expansion right now and dealing with the CPUC and CalM's application there. So that's my update there. And yes, that's it for me tonight.
Well, thank you, Council member Tyler. Council member Alan or Council member Ed?
Yeah. Hans, anything?
Okay. Yeah, sure. Well, I just wanted to respond to some of the folks who called in about renter issues and assured them that their concerns are heard. I understand their frustration, their rents are going up. It's becoming more unaffordable for them. And I know what that's like. And it feels like it's taking us some time. I would just note that this whole districting issue was kind of foisted upon us and really took precedence over our priorities. But I do believe this council does see the needs of renters as a priority. And I look forward to us discussing soon the renter registry and I hope some of the other ideas that were brought up a few months ago will also soon be on the agenda. I just wanted to also let folks know, had a chance to meet with a representative from our sister city. We have a sister city relationship with a number of different cities. I had the chance a few years ago to visit Lankaran, Azerbaijan. While there, former councilwoman Nancy Selfridge and I tried to establish a kind of educational exchange between the University of Lankaran and Monterey Peninsula College. And this winter session, somebody from Azerbaijan came and took some English as a second language classes at MPC to kind of get that started. And we're looking at hopefully sending some professors from MPC to our sister city in the summer to teach English there. So we hope this will be the start of a strong educational exchange between our cities. I also wanted to explain something, a decision I made recently, not as a council member, as a resident, as a citizen, to sign on to a recall petition for my airport board member, Marianne Luffel. I don't take that decision lightly because I'm in general, not in favor of recalls. People in the regular, sometimes I don't agree with decisions people make in their official capacity, but that's the way it goes. And but in this case, I wanted to explain why I think it's a little bit different. For me, the main motivation had to do with the airport board and Marianne Luffel's role in the airport board's misleading, and I would even say really quite deceptively misleading residents of Monterey regarding the airport's master plan. And you've probably read about it. The Weekly has covered it. And I'm very happy that the city of Monterey prevailed in court against the airport board over this issue. And one of the things that came out in the public is the fact that our airport board member, Marianne Luffel, was telling residents of Monterey and the city of Monterey not to worry. There's not going to be any more traffic along Airport Road because our master plan calls for building an alternative road that will absorb that traffic. Meanwhile, she goes to a neighboring city which opposed that road that was part of their master plan and tells them, as long as I'm on the board, it'll never get built and there's no plans for it to be built. And yes, it's in our master plan, but it's never really going to happen. And so to me, that's really unethical. And I don't think that it represents, it doesn't represent me, it doesn't represent the residents of Monterey. And that's the main reason why I signed that recall petition. And you may be hearing from folks who will be asking for your signature to put that on the ballot very soon. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Alan. Council member Ed.
Okay, great. Thank you. All good updates to hear. In keeping with some activities, the local news that's put out by the City of Monterey is advertising the springtime kickoff and a kickoff. And let me open up the notice that I was looking at. On the 19th of March, at Friendly Plaza, it's time to get your gloves out and your cuttings out. And it's the exhibits of all of the horticulture items. So March 19th at the Friendly Plaza, which is down adjacent to the Polton Hall from 9:00 AM to noon. So that's the 65th Annual Cutting Day. And so please, you know, come and join everyone who is ready to exchange some cuttings and clippings. Also, the previous week, on the 12th, the Canary Row Rotary Club that I belong to is completing a project that was a grant where we obtained a district grant with four clubs. And I think the dollar amount was about $8,000. And this will be our third event, planting trees in the city of Monterey. So we partnered with our city staff and they've assisted with finding locations to replace some trees that had died through storms or infections. So we'll be at Whispering Pines Planting on the week before. So everything springtime, starting on March 12th, join us at nine o'clock at Whispering Pines to plant trees. And the following weekend, Saturday, join your neighbors at the 65th Annual Cutting Day at Friendly Plaza. Nothing else to report in terms of other board activity. It's been relatively quiet for me in the last couple of weeks. So that's all I had to report.
Well, thank you. Council member Ed. City manager reports?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On February 24th, McCorr will be hosting the State of the City address as they did in the past many, many years. The mayor and I will provide an overview there. The meeting will be virtual. The Zoom link will be shared with everyone who wants to register for that event. It will be next week, Thursday, from 5:00 to 6:00 PM. Also, next week, Wednesday, we will bring, as I shared with council during my updates, our rental registry report that will be coming next week, Wednesday, in a council special meeting at 4:00 PM. The library is hosting their fun event of the year, which is the chocolate and wine event with a drive-through on February 26th from 1:00 to 3:00 PM where people can basically drive through and they get a goodie bag filled with chocolate and wine. This Friday is the Family Fun Friday night at the Sports Center. The night for us starts at 3:00 PM. And last but not least, we invite the public to help us review the Hazard Mitigation Plan. We can share that this is a countywide plan, but the city residents have been the overwhelmingly majority of participants in that plan. And so it's still available on our website and there are the appropriate links to find. It's called the Hazard Mitigation Plan. But I can share with you overwhelmingly, it has been already received input from residents in the city of Monterey and we are very happy about that as well. And that concludes my city manager comments.
Thank you. There's a lot of really nice events going on. We're going to adjourn to a closed session momentarily. Before we do that, if there's anyone in the public who wanted to address our closed session items, this would be your opportunity. So we'll just take a moment and ask our city clerk if anyone wanted to speak to our closed session items.
There are currently no hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Then in that case, we will adjourn to a closed session. Let's reconvene in closed session if we can at 8:15. And I will ask our staff to make sure we all have Zoom links because if I couldn't get into this one initially, I want to be sure I can join that. So it might be a good idea to resend that link. Thank you very much. And thank you, as always, to the staff, our public and council for an interesting and brief meeting. Those are few and far between. So we'll see you all here in about 10 minutes and for a closed session. Thank you.